Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining the Board of Selectmen for Monday, December sixteenth, two thousand thirteen, at seven P M. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reminder that the town offices will be closed on Christmas Day, Wednesday, December twenty-fifth, as well as Thursday, December twenty-sixth. Additionally, the town will be closed on Wednesday, January first. The Board wishes everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And we have approval of minutes from December second, two thousand thirteen, at seven P M.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Page three, appointments and resignations.
Uh huh.
I think I inherited a daughter, Ashley Reposa. She'd be Ashley Rivera.
You are correct. I will.
As long as she's old enough, you don't have to support her. All right, with that being fixed, do we need another motion?
If we get correction and make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi, Josh.
Good evening.
And I do have four warrants this evening. One is a very small payroll warrant for a mistake that was made on the last payroll, so there was an adjustment made. This is just for twenty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents. I have the payroll deductions, which is the health insurance, retirement, et cetera, in the amount of six thousand, two hundred, twenty-seven dollars and fifteen cents. I have the payroll warrant for the pay period ending December fourteenth in the amount of thirty thousand, six hundred, seventy dollars and sixty-one cents. And lastly, the vendor warrants dated December sixteenth in the amount of seventy-three thousand, two hundred, ninety-six dollars and sixty-eight cents. And that's a little higher than usual. We've got some trash payments, some snow and ice, tuition to Norfolk, and the transportation. So that's what made that bump up a little bit.
Okay. Motion to accept warrants is read. Shaboot. All set. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next we have a building inspector.
I just got a first thing on building permits for the last few years, so you can see the progression. In the second page, a question was asked on me about zoning enforcement. I did it vertically to show the progression. It was a little easier. The two thousand thirteen is up to today's date.
Yep.
I expect a few more stove permits, so add to that a teeny bit, you know?
Yeah, okay.
On the right-hand side, I highlighted the pen D plus the difference
Yep.
in the previous year.
So the estimated cost is low, but the permit fees were high.
Right.
Mike, you aware that the town passed stretch energy code in May, two thousand twelve?
Yes.
You're enforcing the code requirement?
Yes. Doing proper, getting the builders up to date on that too, you know? You check, I talk to them when they come in when someone's doing insulation and seal and stuff like that. I have a green code book and I talk to them about that.
Sorry, new construct, what do you got for new construction going on right now?
There's a new house, Four Hirtu Road. And there's a bed and breakfast that's currently in Limbo right now, Four Rondon Road.
And that will be compliant to stretch energy?
Yes, both of them. Actually, the gentleman on Four Hirtu Road has an electrical school, so we've been having a go back and forth, no, in a good way, professional way, you know? Today on codes and stuff.
It was brought to my attention, perhaps the need for a protocol when a town official has an inquiry or a question.
Yeah, I'm gonna go over that right now, so we're done with the permit stuff. Okay, the building inspector stuff, we go over the zoning stuff.
Okay.
So, any other issues on building inspector issues? No questions? Yeah, so... I know, in the past, well, just an example. When I was first a selectman, I asked a former building inspector for some help on a property. He said, sure, fill out this form. I said, okay, I filled it out, any procedure. Then he said, well, the property's X amount of years old, statute of limitation is gone, nothing I can do. End of story, over. But he said he cannot do anything without that form filled up. Doesn't matter if it's the governor asking or a resident. By law, before they can approach a prop, the only thing he could do without a written complaint is look up the file and say, yes, there is a two-family, or no, it's not a two-family according to this file. But that's as far as you can go. You have to, where it was explained to me by Mr. Gian Pietro was, you have to be on a public way, have a photograph of the violation in order to file the complaint. You can't just go by hearsay. You can't have a picture that was obviously taken from that property, because then you're setting yourself up for a lawsuit. So, I mean, Mike could probably explain further detail.
I appeared in Norfolk Superior Court in front of Superior Court judges for code and zoning violations. And the gentleman had pictures of my footprints in the snow. Because I first, I went with the health inspector. I first walked up to the fence and looked, then I looked at my footprints before I took any pictures, and I backed up. But I had two sets of, actually, I took a set of prints at the fence and I backed up and I showed the judge the difference. You can tell with depth perception. But they did question me on that, and I didn't submit the ones when I was standing at the fence. I didn't submit those as evidence. I submitted the ones that actually was town property. It was a park I was standing on. And I submitted those, and he accepted that readily, you know? He said, okay. The depth perception was real obvious, you know? You know, on the zoning request, folks, here's one that I got. It was for Seventh Providence Street. And here was my action to the owner. And that gentleman since has moved out of there. What happened was, this guy that submitted this gave me a bunch of pictures, and I went down and took a bunch of pictures. It was a lawnmower and pier service they were running there. And they had six or seven cars outside with four sale signs on them. He had fluorescent lights in the window open. And there's something else about that I have to talk to, but that would have to be in the executive section because there's ongoing investigation in another property. It's not new construction either. But soon as I seen that, I said, holy cow. But the guy was correct, and so I wrote a letter to the owner. And they responded. No one could say they get a hold of us, but the woman brought the letter up to the tenant and showed it to him. And he moved out. He moved to another property, which I'm dealing with now too. But it's, I got him to shuffle around a little bit. But it does work. And as far as a town official, it's the law in Massachusetts that if in the town you work in, if you're a code official or any kind of official, you see a violation, like you see somebody framing a house, for instance, you have to, you're supposed to tell another department. It's written in the building code like that, but it's in the Mass General laws too about that. I'm not sure of the Mass General law, but I know it's in the building code that each town official is supposed to...
So would the town official have to fill this particular form out?
Um...
Or could it be through an email?
I would accept the email as, yes, nowadays, an email was actually a public document, you know?
Right.
I issued a, I suspended a permit and I did it by email. Because my, to be honest with you, my printer was out of ink and I couldn't go on, but it worked.
Yep.
Yeah, but that's a legal document, you know? If you go down to a court of law, I know it is.
So, all right. So what procedure would be the proper procedure? Let's just say if a realtor has a question for the assessors during, you know, in the process of a purchase and sale, so to speak? What would be the...
I have one that's, Wednesday, last Wednesday night, a week ago before this one, I had a phone call message on my machine, which I called the gentleman back. It was a real estate agent. He was asking, I'll tell you, the property is Forty-Three Fisher Street. He asked me if it was a legal two-family. I said I would have to look in the zoning. He said, well, the zoning says it's legal to do it. I said, I have to see if we have building permits, and we have none. I think there's a permit for a deck in there. I'm not positive. I'd have to check, but it's something way out that has nothing to do with an in-law or a two-family. So I emailed him back that night or within the next, within forty-eight hours, I emailed him back and said that there's no permits in the town files for that. So now he filed up another email. He gave me a page out of the zoning book. And what he basically did was take a sentence out of a paragraph. The sentence says that it is, a two-family is allowed in the outlying district, but it doesn't, the next paragraph says that the building inspector will not issue on the zoning bylaws per order of the Board of Selectmen a certificate of occupancy without proper building permits. That's the law in town. And it's common, it's been common since September twenty-third, nineteen seventy-seven, when you adopted the zoning bylaws. So that is common then and current now, you know, so... That's basically what I told him. I said, we still haven't, it's legal to have a, to convert a single family into a two-family if it was in existence before September twenty-third, nineteen seventy-seven. I think this house was built in nineteen forty-seven. I'm not positive. But we still have no building permits on file, so legally you can't issue a certificate of occupancy because there's no one on premise. I don't know what he has on the wall there, you know, for electrical, for plumbing. And that would be a heck of a liability if we said, oh yeah, it's all fine, legal, and something burnt down.
Right. Okay, so, all right. Well, we won't get into the legal part of this, is it legal or not? That's not what this, this is just so, all right, so any town department that would like information on stuff like that, as long as they email you with some good enough...
They email me, that would be fine.
Procedure.
This is, this file, this here is mostly for a resident to file a complaint against his neighbor or something he sees. There's a difference if you're coming as a town official or a board member, something like that. Accept the email will be fine.
Okay.
And actually, as you know, the building inspector's own officer answers to the appointment authority, which is you people. The only person I answer to is to you people in town, you know, as far as, you're the only people that can tell me what to do.
Well, you can't enter a property that doesn't have an open permit without legal notice.
Oh, no, I have to ask them, a legal notice...
A business that sells alcohol, tobacco?
I can enter it, like the police or the fire at any time during business hours.
That you could do.
If we give out, like, you know, the emergency exit lights and stuff.
But any property that doesn't have a building permit
No.
active, we can't just send you without a written formal complaint?
No, no.
And that has to be a legitimate written formal complaint?
Exactly.
It can't be a hearsay thing, it has to have some proof.
I have a couple hearsay complaints, but I, actually, I have one I have to talk to the chief someday about, but that's another case. But some of the stuff is obvious from the street, you know? But I'm not sure, I have to read into everybody else's bylaws
Okay.
to check on them.
All right.
I guess the only question I would have is, if a town official, whether it's the planning board or the assessor's office, has a question in connection with the property that would require a site visit for you to give a valid answer, are you going to be able to perform a site visit just to answer an inquiry? We're not alleging a violation, we're not looking for enforcement. We're just looking to have a question answered. So how would you go about answering that if a site visit is necessary?
I think I, if I, I don't think I have any inquiries like that, Helen. If I do, I would call the people at their house, because it's not, you just can't invade the place, you know? And I would ask them, you know, talk to them about it. Everybody in this town's been pretty nice, I don't have any problems, you know? I get along good with everybody, actually, I have been, I think mostly everybody.
So if a realtor or a bank had a question on financing your house that's for sale, and they had, and you had to... So if the homeowner says, no, you can't come in, what do we do? We can't come in?
And another thing I gotta add to that too. I have to charge the inspection fee to go out there.
Right.
It's like, you're paying me an inspection fee for somebody out of town asking a question?
Yeah.
If we incorporate that somehow into our fee schedule?
Right.
Then maybe we could do that, you know? But...
Right, I mean, but if it's an enforcement issue, then there's gonna be no fee to charge.
No.
If they're found guilty, then we'll get the fee at that point.
Exactly.
But, yeah, no, I know what you're saying. So if a bank wants to know or a realtor wants to know something, and the homeowner allows you to make the visit, it'll be a thirty-dollar fee.
Right.
That's fair enough.
In Walpole, like the Walpole Mall, giving the example, just like copying and stuff, talk about total money around. We had archives in the attic, and they wanted a copy of all the occupancy permits for all the stores in the Walpole Mall, right? And the boss was looking at me, goes, have fun. I said, thanks. So I got them, and I sent them, and the fee was seven hundred and something dollars for the copying and the research and stuff like that, because they had to do the time it took us to do that. Two weeks later, everything, we put everything back, you know? Two weeks later, they wanted the same thing. So I looked at my boss, he says, same fee. I said, okay, do it again. But it just goes, you're like, but we did charge for the time, for the time, town employees, and for the copying and stuff like that.
Well, you have to.
Yes. Because you're paying it, the taxpayers are paying that fee, you know?
Yeah, if you do something outside of your stipend, you have to charge.
Yes. I try to keep aware of that, and I try to be careful. How do I, you know, go about enforcing stuff so I don't put us under the gun for a lawsuit or anything like that? I do a little research back and forth, you know, before I...
So in the event, you do some investigating from, without entering the property, and you have paperwork and maybe photographs that prove that there's something wrong, and they say you're not coming, now what? You have to go to the judge and get...
Yes, yeah, we can request...
And then the police would escort you?
Yes, and escort the police, especially if you're going after someone like that.
Okay.
I've done that before. It's a better move to make. Please cut the guns.
All right. And to your knowledge, you answer everybody's emails at your earliest convenience?
I do. Because some, I get them, a few times I've had plumbers, actually, I've got an envelope upstairs with a check made out to the town or something. I'm just leaving it sitting there. We're not responsible to go chase these people around. You know, saying he made out the check. I don't know, I'm sure if that street's in Millville. He just actually dropped off the thing at the wrong time. So next time he brings a permit, I know who it is. It's not a plumber or electrician or nothing. It's a guy doing something else, but, no, it's sitting there.
Okay. All right, so that's, I mean, I don't have any more questions on that. I have a couple comments, but I'll see if someone else has questions first. All right, so to clarify, and this has nothing to do with you, Mike. To clarify, town officials, town employees, you do have, you have a hundred percent of the Board's support if you do file a complaint, whether through an email or through this town form. I've heard that everyone, you know, people are now afraid that they're gonna be, have relationship issues. And that's not true. It's not gonna happen, never has happened. Not so long as I've been on this board, it hasn't happened that way, and that's not the way we operate. If you have a legitimate concern of a property, you definitely contact the zoning enforcement officer, who is the building inspector, and never think that we're gonna single you out or you're gonna be under some sort of harassment in the future. I don't care who the complaint is against or what it has to do with. And I was kind of appalled to get that message on my email, that people feel that way. And that's not the way that I try and present this board. I don't think anybody on this board presents themselves that way as well. And it's pretty appalling to think that some of the town employees may feel that way about this board. This management team here, and I emphasize team, is, you know, is gonna back up whatever interests support this town and whatever is legal by the Commonwealth of this state.
Can I add something real quick, Owen?
Mm-hmm.
I think that in reference to that too, I think I've been open, fair, and very receptive to anybody that came in front of me, asked me, anybody, you know? I keep an open mind, like if somebody comes in, like, you know, when you start somewhere when I was new, people say, oh, watch out for that person, watch out for that. And I didn't take that, I know better. Because, you know, when you leave somewhere, that guy always did the bad thing, you know?
Yep.
But I kept an open mind, and I'm glad I did, because some people that told me something to somebody was bad, turns out to be wonderful people, you know? It's just somebody has a little hair across about them, you know, so...
Yep, yep.
But so I keep an open mind, and I ask anybody that's come up there to see me, like, and I greet them, always shake their hands, I'm like, it's pathetic, you know? I like the people in this town. Everybody's been good.
Okay, very good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight, Carl.
I have nothing.
All right, thank you. Very good, thanks, James. All right, the highway surveyor can't make it tonight. He'd like to meet the first week in January.
He requested a meeting in January. We haven't confirmed which one, but we'll get on that.
Well, yes. Is the sixth?
Six is the next one.
Do we know where we stand with the paperwork, chapter ninety?
We have no...
All right, so at what point? I mean, we can't let that money ride away. Chapter ninety has to be filed.
Correct.
So at what point could this committee here take...
I would have to contact Mass Highway, but I would be looking for the Board's direction to do that.
All right, and what kind of timeframe are we looking at before we lose two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars?
I don't think there's a definitive cutoff. I think they close their books when they feel they're at a good place to close their books. I've had this discussion with Marilyn.
So the cutoff could be tomorrow?
It could be.
Well, then, with that said, I'd like to make a motion to have that, or make a necessary phone call to find out what needs to be done to expedite the forms and everything like that.
I can add one thing to that. When the engineer was down here, Mr. Robida from Mass, he gave me, I don't have it with me. Well, I'm sure Helen knows that individual. He recommended for us to call that individual for...
Yeah. So, I mean, we've been discussing this, I wanna say, since August? September? We've been questioning this paperwork being done?
Yeah, because they usually recommend you get it in by October.
So I'm getting kinda a little nervous here. Yeah, I mean, we can't afford a two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar hit. We can't afford two-hundred dollar hit, so... All right, is there a second? Second. Second. All right. Any further discussion on that? All in favor? Aye. Aye. And then, and we're not doing this to...
What thing do you have?
...to step on anybody's toes in any way, shape, or form. It's just very important to the town's budget that it gets done, and if we can help the highway surveyor expedite it, we will. We will be more than happy to help him.
Do you have that number that Joe was talking about?
Yes, sir.
All right. First public forum? Any correspondence, anyone? I have none. Appointments and resignations. We have Cable Access Committee. The Cable Access Committee has made the following appointment request for an alternate member of the Cable Access Committee. It is Jesse DuPaul. And Jesse is a hard worker behind the scenes, and without him, you wouldn't be looking at our lovely faces tonight. So should the Board wish to approve this request, I'd be looking for a motion to appoint Jesse DuPaul as alternate member of the Cable Access Committee effective immediately for a period ending June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen.
Congratulations, Jesse.
All right. All in favor? Aye. All right. Thanks, Jesse. Helen, you have a report tonight?
Just very quickly, as most of you are aware, we lost heat over the weekend again in this building. As it turns out, I'm told we need a new motor, so that part is on order. And we hope that will be installed this week. Just a reminder, the town hall will be closing at noon time this Thursday. We will have painting starting right at noon time in the building through Thursday into Friday, probably into Saturday. I will be on vacation all of next week, the week of Christmas, but I will be available by cellphone if you need me.
Okay.
Reminder that Senator Moore's reed laying is Wednesday morning at nine forty-five over at the Veterans Park. And the last thing is the next meeting agenda for the January sixth meeting. I would need any agenda items into me by Tuesday, December thirty-first
Okay.
because of the holiday.
All right.
And that's it.
All right, I have a question by a number of residents wanting an explanation on why we were closed Wednesday night after Thanksgiving.
There was no staff. There was no staff to open the building.
Okay, but why?
Everybody had other personal things they needed to tend to.
Well, it's part of their job description, Wednesday night, six to eight.
But they do have sick time, vacation time that they are allowed to take.
Wow, everybody on the same night?
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, most of the departments are run by one person, so if that one person is out, the department's closed. We don't have multiple people in each department, so...
Okay. Okay, any new business?
You can do old business first.
Well, there's no new business, so we'll go right to... Well, there's no new business, so we'll go right to members' forum, or old business. Oh, I skipped right over it.
Right.
I had my thumb on it. Sorry about that. All right, so the green energy, um, so we have a representative of Guardian here, and I'll let Joe take over for this.
This is, uh, this is the final piece in, in our, uh, pursuit of, um, green energy community status. Effectively, um, addressed all the criteria required by, by, uh, DOER. And this portion of it is, um, where Matt would be involved, is, uh, to, to make assessments in the town, um, and, um, assist with putting our, uh, energy conservation measures in, in action. Uh, but we have to make a presentation to DOER. And if successful with the grant, I mean, with, with gaining, achieving the, uh, green energy community status, uh, there's a approximately a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollar grant, which, uh, could be used to begin the, um, the, you know, start the projects to, uh, reduce energy in various town buildings and at, at the elementary school. Now, two weeks ago, uh, I presented the proposal that Guardian, uh, submitted. And at that time, we asked for questions. If there are any questions regarding the services that Guardian, Guardian will provide. So Matt's good enough to be here tonight, and if we have any questions regarding the process, we could ask, uh, put him to Matt. Mr. Davis has any, we discussed it as a committee subsequent to that select board meeting. Yeah, and also, I just wanna add one more thing, is that, uh, Guardian comes highly recommended. Many of you are using Guardian as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Members of the board, if you, if I might, uh, as Mr. Reposo has, uh, related, uh, Matt Wetter-Moore is here with Guardian, from Guardian Energy. Uh, my understanding is each of you received a copy of this memorandum of understanding.
Yes.
My first question to the board or the board members are, do you have any questions concerning this? That, that you didn't understand, that you want clarification on or anything like that?
I don't.
Okay. If I might a little bit, and Matthew can correct me as we go through it, though. Once we sign this memorandum of understanding, Guardian Energy, in conjunction with the Green Energy Committee, he will, they will work with us on the process of, one, doing a complete audit, energy audit of every one of our buildings here in town, including the elementary school. Uh, that is shown on, on addendum one of the five-page memorandum, which lists, lists out the Millville Elementary School, the Millville Police Station, Millville Fire Department number one, Salt Shed, uh, Long, Longfellow Town Hall, Millville Senior Center, and the Pump House. Uh, I contacted, uh, Matthew after our last meeting and had him add, uh, before our last meeting, and had him add Millville Fire, Fire Department Station number two. The reason we added that is that we wanna be able to show on our application an energy savings. We don't know what that's going to be until they audit. So, and because, as you're well aware, the, uh, more than I, uh, there is some future plans of establishing a new fire department building, and then eliminating that fire station number two up there. But we still wanna show what amount of energy we're going to save by closing that building down. With this Guardian. Uh, once that audit is done, Matthew will, uh, uh, and his company will assist us in putting together the application that must be submitted to the DOER, uh, in order to gain, uh, green energy status, uh, green community designation.
Okay.
Once we have, uh, accomplished that, then as Mr. Reposo said, we get grant money. Then we can, uh, we can do a number of projects that have been identified by Guardian Energy as projects that will save us, and we can go and get the biggest bang for our buck by having the state pay for them. Guardian Energy, uh, Matthew's company does, does not charge us for this energy audit or the assistance that they're going to give us in submitting our application to the state. Their, uh, financial gain is once that we've been approved and given the grant money, and we decide to do certain projects, they will do them, and then they get paid by the state.
Okay.
The money goes, or it'll come to us, then we pay them, or the state will do it directly to them, or the energy company will pay them directly, or it'll come to us, we'll pay them.
Right.
That's how they get paid.
Okay.
That's why they're doing this service basically free of charge. They're hoping to, uh, be able to, uh, uh, get our business, so to speak.
Right.
And make their money that way. They have been certified by the state, so we do not have to go outside, uh, through a public bidding process. They've already been pre-approved, uh, by the state, so everything is perfectly, perfectly legal. And, uh, we ask a number of questions. This memorandum, memorandum of understanding is for three years. In that three years, uh, if we, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong in this, Matthew. Let's say, for example, that they identify ten projects that can be done, and we only use five of them, we only do five of the projects, and that eats up that first grant that we get from the state.
Okay.
After that, you go into a competitive bidding grant program. They will assist us in putting in, and, and for that competitive grant, trying to, to win one of them.
Okay.
What I'm not sure, do you do the work then, or is that put out for bid, or what?
No, that would fall into the same thing.
So that would fall into them? So, but at the end of three years, we're done. You know, what are, also, what, uh, Guardian Energy is hoping for, that is, after that, if they do a great job for us, and we're satisfied, that we will use them again.
Mm-hmm, okay.
You know?
Yeah, 'cause you guys have a five-year window from when you become your baseline, whatever your baseline is, you have five years to reduce twenty percent in, in
Right.
You know, where there's a twenty percent reduction clause, or, you know, whatever. Services, whatever, how long you wanna, you know, put together. Well, you know, we picked a three-year kind of window, say, you know, this is kind of, so you know, we're gonna be there for the long haul and try to help you gain, you know, reduce that twenty percent.
Okay.
Not just do one project and leave.
And this could, and also, if we, we win this grant, one of the things that we can do is use that grant money to upgrade our boiler system, our boilers. And that would, that would be a great thing, if we can get the state to pay for that under this grant program.
Right.
In our last meeting, it was brought up by our members, and what we want you folks to understand is, uh, at some point, sometimes, somebody related that, well, as long as it doesn't cost us any money, we're all for it.
Yeah.
Well, we all are that way.
Yeah.
This is not always gonna be the case.
Right.
Once we've used the grant money, the initial grant money that we get from the state, after that, we may have, we may get some grant money, but we may have to put a certain percentage with it.
Like we're just doing for the van.
Exactly.
Yep.
We may have to do it. So it could cost us in the future some money. I want everybody to understand that, that from here to infinity is not gonna be free of charge.
Okay.
But this first initial grant is.
Majority of grants, you have to come up with a certain percent.
Yeah.
And we, we work with the utility too, to get your utility setups, to help fund some of the projects as well, so it's, it's like grant money a little further.
Right, okay.
The DOER wants to see, like, you guys
Yeah.
Throw some money into it, you know?
Right.
And whenever the, the town invests in monetarily, there's, there's a payback in energy savings.
Right.
Just making an investment in
Yep.
Energy reduction.
The other thing that, uh, our membership wanted to bring to your attention is that once, if when, and, or once, I almost say once, we are granted green energies, uh, the green, designated as a green energy community, our, our task on the green energy committee is done. That's what we were formed for, and so after that is done, then you folks are gonna have to reappoint another green energy committee to keep going forward. And taking care of the grant program, to doing all these other things, the competitive bidding or whatever.
Okay.
So we wanted you to make sure that, and realize that our, our existence is not through infinity.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, what we need from the board of selectmen is if you and the members are satisfied with the memorandum, memorandum of understanding, we would like to get you to sign the memorandum of understanding, so that we can get this process rolling as soon as possible. Have them come out and start doing their energy audit of all the buildings.
Okay.
And get it, get it on their schedule as quick as we can. So I'll leave it with Mr. Chairman that, uh...
Does that require one signature, or?
It ju- I think that it's like anything else, and Helen, I'm sure can correct me if I'm wrong, that as long as the, it's voted upon by the membership, then the chairman of the board of selectmen can sign the document.
Okay.
Most you have a choose sign?
So I'll second that.
All right, any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have it?
I have one original.
Okay, is that the most latest, the latest copy, let me see, addendum one.
Uh, one, one, uh, announcement that I forgot to do, um,
That's got the new one.
For the cable committee, uh, all, all the, uh, events that the cable committee records and, uh, stuff, you know, like, for instance, the senior center had their Christmas party last week. You can view that on YouTube. Uh, you get to watch them all doing karaoke and doing poker and all that. Um, so, just, just to, uh, inform everybody that's, that's computer savvy, if they wanna watch certain, uh, recordings, you can go to YouTube and, 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 uh, and look for them. Thank you very much, Helen.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Uh, members forum, Joe?
Me, huh?
Yep, Twenty-One Hope Street Passageway.
Oh, okay. I wanna start by saying that I received correspondence from a town resident regarding, uh, Twenty-One Hope Street. And, uh, it just, I'll summarize what it says, but, uh, I'll share copy, high copy for the record of that correspondence. You know?
I said, what the hell? Thanks.
Thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
Sure.
This is a, an email received from, uh, Tom Height, uh, Forty-Six SC Street. It was dated twelve, nine, two thousand thirteen, and the subject was Twenty-One Hope Street, uh, pedestrian passageway. He states in his, uh, his correspondence that, um, he feels that the town spent way too much money and time over the years, uh, dealing with, with the issue. According to Mr. Height, uh, the easement was created by a Mr. Farmer in eighteen fifty-three, when there were mills all along the river. Uh, it was a time where there were no automobiles, so consequently, people walked to work and used the passageway as a shortcut. As a matter of fact, uh, Mr. Height states that, uh, there were a number of those shortcuts in existence at the time and used for that same purpose. He states that that was a hundred and seventy years ago, a different time. And he questions having to maintain that passageway and, uh, the town bear the expense for snow removal and sanding in the winter, as well as other associated and potential liability issues. Mr. Height recommended, recommended solution is to deed the easement to the current owner of Twenty-One Hope Street with the request that they pay the expense for the transfer, if the board is amenable. The, the upside on that liability and expense, uh, to the town goes away, and the property becomes an asset on the real estate, uh, base. This weekend, I was, uh, in the company of, uh, an individual who's had a similar type of experience with, with the town she's from. And she said, uh, what, uh, Mr. Height is proposing is a smart thing to do. But she says, however, you should mark that historic site with, with some type of a marker. So if the board's in agreement, uh, I, I foresee that the steps that the owners would have to be approached, warrant prepared for the annual town meeting, and, uh, leave it to the town residents to decide if to so. Any land taken has, my understanding, has to go through
Yes.
Town meeting. It does. So. I think I fairly summarized.
I'm, I'm game for that, because, uh, for the first over a year that I was selecting, that was a big issue, and it was kind of a pain in the backside. And now here it is, five years later, on the burner again. And, uh, so it would be good, the market has a historical site, but see if the town would vote to, to pass the ownership of that easement.
Leave it to town meeting.
To, to the owner of the two sides of that easement. With the, with the understanding that the, the homeowner would, would pay for all the legal fees to, to do the transfer. So that would be something that we'll have to prepare for town meeting. And then we'll vote on it when, when we do the warrants, right?
Yeah.
Be done with it.
So we don't need any vote now, today. Okay. Besides, I'd rather Jennifer be here as well to voice her opinion before we vote on it. So, all right, thanks, Joe. And now you have one other issue?
What was my other issue? Oh.
Factory auto salvage.
Factory auto salvage. You know, some que- a question came up about, uh, the request I made for, uh, public records.
Yep.
And, uh, I believe I, I shared this before, but the reason for my request was that I wasn't getting appropriate information, either, you know, speaking with officials around, you know, town hall, and particularly with, with the planning board. And I tried to get it, I wanted to get an understanding of what was a, a non-conforming precondition, pre-existing condition. And what, with the scope, with the latitude was regarding that. Finally, when the, uh, the information came to my attention, I found that, uh, the court finding, well, number one, the court finding was dismissed, or the court case was dismissed without a finding prejudice anywhere. It had nothing whatsoever to do with, uh, it had to do everything with the sale of construction equipment, and not what appears to be happening in terms of what's going on there. And that, in that legal information, I, I don't see any, any, um, anything that would exempt or preclude, um, that, that operation from having to comply to, um, Mass General laws or whatever zoning is, uh, is coming into effect. So, was, on my part, it was a, an exercise in discovery and to, uh, perhaps guide this board going forward as to, you know, how we deal with that situation. I understand that the tax situation is, is being a- addressed.
Yep.
It's. That was my primary.
That's going through the D O R and, and our tax collector is on top. And I spoke to her, and she said that he's been very cooperative and has already paid some money, and he has to, he has eased to have the rest of the twenty-five percent, and then he'll be on a payment program. If that doesn't happen, then D O R takes over, pretty much. Well, we do all the work, but.
The, the thing that really bothered me was that, that, that total sum that was due equated to exactly twelve average taxpayers in town. So, taxpayers were actually subsidizing the business.
And, you know, in, in, in anybody's defense, in the last five years, many businesses have defaulted on taxes, any, all kinds of loans because of the tough economy. And so, as a town, we wanna work with anybody that has back taxes and get them on a payment plan, 'cause we have very little business in town as it is, and we definitely don't wanna drive it away as long as it's a legal business. And the auto salvage, recycling, however you wanna word it, has been a fixture in this town for seventy years or more. So, it's, it's a tough.
How, how do you, how do you define the pre-existing condition of seventy years ago and equate it to today's?
The only record is that Mr. Webster was there for X amount of years and sold it to Mr. Polley and, you know. Records weren't kept as, as, as they are today. Seventy years ago, you could just go downtown and say, I got an auto recycling plant down the street, and they said, okay.
Yeah.
And that was the end of it.
I, I was not clear of what his agenda was that night. What was, what was the purpose?
I think, five or six years ago, he was, he was run through the mill. And I think he got nervous and defensive.
Right.
And rightfully so. So, uh, you know.
I just, you know.
That's all.
My concern there is, is like, who's, who's watching? Who knows what's going on up there? Does anybody know? And I, you know, and I know we've kind of talked here and there, but.
It's just, it's steel, aluminum, or copper too, I guess.
From my understanding, a lot of his business isn't there. It's on the road. He's not there.
But my point is, I don't agree on.
I don't, because I don't watch it. I mean, I have no clue. But I know a lot of his business is not there. It's on the road.
He'll get, I don't know, they're gonna demolish a building somewhere. They call him. So, on that site, he might have X amount of dumpsters, brick and concrete goes in this one, wood in this one, metal in this one. So on. And that's just that, and whatever metal, that's his business, metal. He brings back here, weighs it, and then goes to wherever, I don't know.
I just don't know, there was chemicals up there to use and solvents, there's stuff going in.
No, he, he crushes compacts and weighs it. And then.
As well. No, just, I would just like to know.
Yeah.
E P A wise, he's good.
Yeah.
He's all up and up, and I, and I'm with you on it.
Yeah.
Taxpayers, we need them.
Yeah.
Don't come in and like pick a fight and then.
And I believe red flags. The, I know the, the fire department does annual inspections up there, and I don't believe they have any issues.
Do they go up there, chief?
We did.
Yeah.
But we basically check.
Chief.
Smoke detectors.
Please. Thank you.
We did do an inspection a couple of weeks ago. We checked the smoke detectors, the fire extinguishers, and things like that. We don't do a comprehensive examination of the entire property.
Right.
So, what is behind that building or on the adjacent piece of land, we don't know, 'cause we don't do that. So, it's a large piece of property, a lot of different things going on at any time, so I can't tell you what's going on on that parcel.
Right. But what you checked and inspected was in.
We only checked inside.
It was a fire inspection, right?
Fire inspection, it's not, it has this waste unless we see it and we identify it. You know, we check if he has acetylene torches, that type of equipment.
Right.
Outside of that, we don't look. Unless it's noticeable.
Right.
We don't have the right to walk through his property looking for violations of U P A or anything else unless we have a reason for it. Our commitment is somewhat limited as to the scope of what Mr. Repulse is speaking about, that's beyond the fire department.
Well, I think he would, judging by him coming that night, I think he would be receptive to just clearing the air once and for all. Everything's on the up and up, we're good. You guys have come in and checked it. I'm, I'm making good on my back taxes, and let's just move forward.
On his business certificate, he listed one employee and three vehicles. Nope, nothing about a sedan or anything like that.
I've been there before, they repair their trucks, they repair their own equipment. There is acetylene torches, it's a garage per se. So, you know, I'm not the zoning officer, so I'm not sure what he's allowed to have there. We just check it from a fire perspective. That's what I did for that. So, you'd have to really probably address those questions to the zoning officer as well. So, what goes on, what he's allowed to have, sounds interesting to the fire.
I don't think any of the automotive businesses in town has permits, has on their agreement, on their license agreement that they have acetylene torches. But if you can show me a garage without one.
Yeah, but that, the reason I bring that up is the planning board may brought up that issue with the lawnmower repair guy.
That's, those are different chemicals, I mean, acetylene torches, it's, it's a tool. I, I got them in my truck. I, I go through tunnels with them, 'cause I'm under a certain pounds of, of acetylene. It's, it's, it's large quantities of chemicals. Where a paint store, that's another situation.
Exactly.
You know, paint supply.
I think, I think we just need to know, that's all.
Yeah.
I think it's crazy that we don't know.
Well, if the fire department does annual visits and they see that they have excellent, certain, certain fuels and chemicals, and it, it's in your documents that, that he has an acety.
But I, I just don't know what he's allowed to do and not do on that property. I mean, I've been there before and seen painting pieces of equipment. I don't know what he's allowed to do or not to do. It's not within my scope, assuming within the zoning officer's scope. And what's the definition of repairs? Is it fixing a vehicle that's broken? Or is it completely painting a new vehicle? Those are questions not for me.
Well, that's something we can ask the building inspector.
Exactly.
It, just, just the street view, you, you know, there's a whole lot going on there. You see mounds of earth and, and the light that freshly been dumped there. Where do they come from, where are they going, that kind of thing. I would have some concern, because this, this board is the Earth Removal Board.
I agree, I agree. Somebody will take a look, no doubt.
But like I said before, we can't walk on the property and just start snooping around.
No, we'd have to, I don't know, it takes a, somebody to fill out the form or an email to Mike or, that's where it starts, right?
And a photograph from the street.
Yeah.
You can need proof, you just can't say, I think. You need a, you need visual proof, or the judge would laugh us for wasting his time.
I mean, if he has five dumpsters, like Willan said, filled with five different products, and you ask him, where did this come from? You say, well, I just did a job. This is going to the scrapyard, this is going here, and this is going there. It has nothing to do with that property. It has something to do with his business outside of the property.
Yeah, but I, and I keep going back to this, we are a town full of wells, and you just can't have stuff being dumped there.
Well, that's why he doesn't do, he, he got out of the automotive uh, industry. It's all just metal. Whether it's aluminum, copper, steel, cast iron, but I know, and dealing with other scrap companies, no, it's not that one in particular. They, they come back, they, they'll leave a dumpster on a project I may be on, and the laborers will throw all the metal in one dumpster, doesn't matter what kind of metal, all goes in one. They take the container back, they sort it on the property, then the highest, they go to the highest bidder, and that guy buys the scrap from them, and that's how they make their money.
You know, I'm not too sure if he's out of the automobile side of it, because if you look to the right of the property, you will see five partially disassembled cars behind his fence from the street.
Yeah.
So, I don't, you know, I don't know what he can do there, but from the street, you can see that.
Yeah.
But if he's allowed to have that type of.
I've been in the yard, I know what's in there.
You know, if he has, if he's allowed to have that, nothing, uh, I was gonna say you can't have it, but you can see that type of activity from the street.
Yep.
So? Shoot an email?
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna touch that, that's a hot cake.
Pardon?
I'm not touching that, that's a hot cake.
How's that?
I already went to court once, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna add my name on that. You gotta do.
You know, it sounds like a little bit of a temptation to me. Maybe you should target to the H G.
If, I, I wouldn't enforce or ask Mike to go there, uh, to, to do anything without photographs and a legitimate written complaint that after Mike investigates the complaint, says, okay, it's worth visiting, and then he, he takes a visit. If the homeowner, if, not a homeowner, if the business owner accepts the visit, good. If not, if, if a judge says it's worth visiting, then it's worth looking into.
Well, that's a different story.
But I'm not just gonna go storming in there and, uh.
I, I'm not.
Because we can't, we can't do that, we can't open.
I'm not advocating that.
To a large lawsuit five or six years ago on that property.
You need to understand though, what, what the parameters are and have a case before you go in there. So, we just need to understand where, where the boundaries are, what the scope is.
I just want to know it's clean. I don't want, I don't want to find out later that, you know, you got a superfund site. And you could, you can't look me in the eye and tell me that you, you know that for sure, that's not going on up there. There's no way.
It's the one in Dallas that I, I know of. It's gonna cause, maybe twice the acreage of that, but it's, they're gonna have to clean it up for seventeen point seven million dollars.
I just want to know it's clean, that's all. I think everybody in this town deserves that.
Yeah. Well, that, that place has been there for how long? There were no, there were no laws seventy years ago, so whatever happened then happened. I mean, there's nothing we can do about it now.
I know he bought it from some man who had it for.
Mr. Webster.
A hundred years.
Yep.
Well, it's just, you know, I say, I say we take big. Whatever, whatever that takes, I'm not looking to, and hopefully he cooperates and lets people come in, take a look, everything's good. That's, that's all with.
I don't know. So.
But it certainly raises a couple of red flags when he comes, comes in here and starts, you know, threatening the board. I just, I didn't care for that.
Like I said before, any, anybody has a concern, email the zoning officer with, with, with the proof needed, and then he'll take over from there.
Well, I believe we attempted that a few weeks ago. I did send an email.
Is there photographs?
I think we all remember the result of that.
Alright, there, was there photographs?
I don't have photographs. I, I wasn't making a complaint, I was making an inquiry. But that's, that's why I questioned Mr. Fitzpatrick earlier to see.
He didn't wanna go, because he didn't have the authority from us to go and make the visit. He can't. I mean, we appointed him, this board appointed him. Not gonna go on an assumption. But, but like he's, he said, but I, I would question, I would do what the board tells me to do, but I would question it if they didn't have pictures or some documents, something. Either photographs or legal documents saying, this is what he's supposed to be doing, but this is what he is doing. Something, he, you know.
Well, I believe.
You can't win a court case with hearsay.
My, my main concern is being the licensing official working for this board, and I think I emailed all of you the Mass General Law that clearly indicates scrap metal businesses and auto salvage businesses require a license.
Yeah.
That's the only thing I'm concerned about, doing the licensing on your behalf. I don't want the state to ever come to, to this board and say, what was your executive secretary doing? Why didn't she license this business? But I don't know for a fact that that's what he does. I've never walked up there, I don't even drive by there, quite frankly, so.
Yeah.
Um, in order for me to determine whether that business needs a license, per Mass General Law, I would need to know what he's doing. But I was instructed by this board not to pursue it, so that's where I'm at right now.
Well, like, we, any, any complaint will be pursued. It has to go through the zoning enforcement officer. He will investigate whether or not it's a legitimate complaint. 'Cause if, he's the one that deals with, with zoning laws in the state every day, in this town and then the other towns he works in. So, he knows the procedures and, and what we can do and what we can't do without opening ourselves up for a lawsuit. And that's all he's trying to do, is protect us from, from any wrongful doings. So, if, you know, the support will be there if, if it's a legitimate complaint.
The coin has two sides, Rob.
Yeah, I know it does. But we gotta, we can't just say, I mean, if we, if we feel, so we send Mr. Fitzpatrick an email or even fill out one of these forms he gave us, either way, and ask him if he'd like to contact the business owner if we can make a visit. Yeah. It's a start. And if, if he says no, well, you're not gonna then go to the judge and say, we want a warrant. And the judge is gonna say, okay, sure, why? Where's the proof? Because the judge isn't gonna open himself up for any wrongful decisions either. You know?
But if you can't, I'm confused, 'cause you're saying we need photographs, but if we can't go on the property to take the photographs, how do we get the photographs?
Right from the street, that's the state law. I mean, if a neighbor, if a neighbor gives you permission to go on their property and do it, that's another story, you can do that.
Can I get this thing called Google Earth?
You can do it from Google.
You can Google it, but you look at the Google, and it said the map was taken, uh.
Yeah, look at Google, that picture could have been five years old. You know?
I do that all the time, I say, wait a minute, this thing is like three years old.
A picture at this very second is the federal government, the military. They're the only ones that'll get a Google shot of right now.
Live.
Live. And that's only for national security.
When was that taken?
You know.
Seriously, you think this has changed? You, you, you don't think all of that is still there right now?
No, it's changed.
I, I'd be willing to bet there's more there.
It's changed, it's not gonna be the same. You, you're gonna see piles of earth piled up here, you're gonna see, uh, vehicles, a big plow, trailers here. Uh, busted rock over here.
That's alright, so. Let's, let's. Somebody, you know, we're gonna move on with this. If we wanna go forward with it, contact Mr. Fitzpatrick, have him contact the landowner.
And see if he's interested.
See if he, he will allow the zoning enforcement officer on the property. Period.
I'm with you.
There's nothing, he can, he can approach a business that has an open liquor license, tobacco license, uh, safety, any, uh, fires, I mean, fire exits and emergency egress stuff.
Yeah.
Him and the, and the fire chief can, can go anytime, you know, a restaurant, for instance, you know. You can walk in, say you're coming in for dinner. What's up with your exit signs? We're shutting you down, you don't have a.
Yeah.
But we can't do that in that type of business, that's certain. You know?
I just think somebody needs to be watching the store there, and I don't think anybody is.
Yeah, and it's hard to.
There's gotta be a way. Okay, yep, I agree. Let's just, let's take step one, and we'll see where it goes.
Alright, uh, final public forum?
How are you doing?
Good, how are you? Good, how are you?
My name is Ak Faran. I live in twenty-nine Old Chestnut Hill Road. And across the street from me is a business. And that would be Max Garage. And when I pull out of my driveway, I'm looking as if I'm watching this TV program. The world after humans. Just the place is deteriorating. Supposed to be a garage and, uh, used car dealership. Supposed to repair cars and have up to twenty cars on the lot. Well, there's about every car out there is. It's, it's a pot. The, the pots are all over the place. It, it's not what he's running. I grew up in the automotive field. I know what it's about. And, um, I've had problems with this guy since the beginning. I've come down here before when Diane McCutcheon was moderator. And I laid out the whole, whole bunch of things. And then we're ready to pull this license then. But they, they give him one more chance and he, he kinda moderated a bit, but now, nah, he's got junk all over the place and, uh, he was open Memorial Day, like, all of a sudden he doesn't care anymore. You know, he used to, it's like the neighborhood, his big thing, I can remember my wife going there to complain about something one time and he says, ah, if you don't like it, I'll buy you out. That was his thing.
Right.
Very, very arrogant. Now, if you wanna watch, if you wanna look at the way an automotive place is supposed to be run, just go down the street. Was it Vito's? Just on Chestnut Hill Road?
Yeah.
You know, the cars are lined up and they're cars. They're not pots of cars.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know if this guy's depressing our properties or not. I'd be very surprised if he wasn't. But anyway, I, like I said, I've been dealing with this guy for years. I could have a bloody list of things to tell you about him, but.
Right, okay. I, I know, uh, I don't know if I could mention this and that, uh, but I've, there is another board that's questioning what's that particular property.
No, I'm sorry.
There is another board questioning that particular property.
Oh, is that right?
Yes. So. I believe it was on the agenda of one of the planning board meetings, maybe last or the two meetings in a row.
I'll create this up a little bit here.
But I, but I, I can't remember exactly when it was. But anyway, it's, it's recently, anyway. So I don't know if the fire chief has any.
Or just one question. Does his license expire?
His license expires December thirty-first.
So it's obviously you can't have a license before then, before December thirty-first.
No, and since this is the, the board's last meeting, they wouldn't be able to issue anything.
Cause we didn't renew that.
Until January sixth.
Well, we just signed all, we didn't sign that.
Correct. If you recall, last year, the board issued a provisional license because of zoning concerns brought forward by the zoning enforcement officer.
Yeah.
The applicant was instructed that although he received a provisional license, he was to consult with the zoning board of appeals. Apparently he either didn't do so or whatever the case. I sent a letter to him in August.
That's what I have on the planning board.
Right, and from the August sixth letter, I hadn't heard anything. I did receive a phone call from him last week asking for his application packet. I told him he was welcome to come in and pick up an application packet, but there was gonna be no license issued until I received written confirmation from the zoning board. And once I received that, all of the inspectors would have to go out to the property, the board of health, conservation, electrical plumbing, there's a whole, you know, list of, of inspections that take place before a license is issued, so.
So once the license expires, then he would fall onto the normal residence that you're allowed only one unregistered vehicle.
Uh, that's one correct insight, yeah.
Yeah. Right now he has sixteen. Like the gentleman says, they are partially disassembled.
Well, he's gonna have to have.
Doesn't look like many of them run. So I was there today, trying to find him, been there like twenty times. He's never there.
So he.
He doesn't live there, does he?
No.
Yeah, I didn't think so. I mean, he rents.
The license that he's currently working under is a class two, which is, authorizes him to sell used motor vehicles. It sounds as though he's working more or less under class three, which is junk parts, so.
Exactly. Cause when Mr. Sharrock was there, it was a different operation.
Well, he was running the garage. He was not that interested in selling cars.
Right, he was a Volkswagen specialist.
He was.
Many of the cars that are there now are, are long-term cars. They've been there for quite a while.
Oh, yeah.
So obviously they're not vehicles that you would sell and turn over relatively quickly. They've been there a while.
Right. Okay.
So those look like he's selling those cars.
All right, well, all right, so as of the first of the year, we can pursue other, other avenues. As, as far as enforcing cleanup. With, with no license for the business, he'd have to, that means he's closed. And he has to clean it up. So.
That's a wonderful Christmas present.
Good news for you. New Year's gift, a Christmas present, everything.
It sure is.
So, no, I don't, I am, I, I feel your pain, you know, I do. So.
I don't mind a guy. You know, people might say, ah, you're nitpicking, you know? It isn't. It is, anybody else, you know, I would give a little leeway and I understand what it is to run a business and, but this, this guy is just too much. I'm sorry, he's been putting up with.
It doesn't look like a business.
It's putting up with this balloon.
It looks like a park and, um. You just gotta keep it clean is all.
You can't talk to the guy. You can't reason with him.
Okay. Understood. All right.
I've said my piece.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
So. We gotta do some signatures. And then we can adjourn. Did you have anything, chief?
I'm good.
Okay. So our, our next regular meeting will be January sixth at seven PM. Uh, two thousand fourteen, by the way, Helen.
Oh, that's right, thank you.
Uh, right here at the Longfellow Municipal Center. So are we gonna see whether, um, the highway surveyor would like to meet that Monday or the second or the third Monday?
Yep, we're waiting to hear back from him and, and I've been jotting down, as you've been sitting here, you asked the question earlier regarding the Wednesday evening. I just jotted down the various positions, um, if you wanted to read that and, um, who as part of their job description is, um, on schedule to be here Wednesday evenings and who isn't.
Right. So the assistant collector, Marcia, uh, it's not in her job description. That's understandable. The elected position is, isn't that part of the agreement or?
There is no agreement with an elected official. They can do what they want.
That's a, that's a get the job done.
Right.
Well.
Now oftentimes we do have, uh, the assistant collector and the business office secretary who will volunteer and come in and, and work if we need it, but, um, we certainly can't require them to.
Right.
Like you've run that green energy gel. Nice job. The, uh, Blackstone is, uh, doing the same thing at the school district.
Same.
Middle, if you get that packet that you received from Helen, um, it came from the, the school, the, uh, Northern Hedges. It is served. They're gonna save much of money at the school.
That's a good thing.
And that's the middle school, isn't it?
That's not that old. Chief, how did you do on your trees this year?
Very well. Did you all well?
Good. Very good.
One hundred and forty.
Wow.
Quite a few.
Well, I thought we did good. Put it on YouTube. You guys can sell three hundred next year. I skipped from Joe. John blew me off.
That's right, from right around.
John blew me right off.
Did the end around, yeah.
Yeah. That's all right. I get it. I'm down here. Okay, watch it through a chair. So here, first, second. Second, all right. All right.